Welcome to the Tuesday, April 23rd, 2019, meeting of the Long Meadow School Committee. The meeting will be recorded, aired live on LCTV, and livestreamed on longmeadow.org. It is a legal requirement that anyone recording the meeting disclose that they are doing so. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There is no correspondence to be recorded, approval of minutes. Do I have a motion?
I move that the school committee approve the minutes to the April 9th, 2019, school committee meeting as presented.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any debate? Seeing none, call for a vote, all in favor? Any answers? Visitor comments? Seeing none, we will move on to school committee announcements and recognitions. Anything? No? Kevin Shay.
So, just two things. One, just wanted to remind everybody that LHS Drama is doing their play, The Outsiders, on May 2nd, 3rd, and 4th. Wanted to invite everybody to come to that. The other one, since we just had a couple of great trips over April break, I wanted to just recognize the faculty and the administrators who do all the great work to put those trips together. I know that my daughter was in the Japan trip last year, had an amazing time. My son was on the Lyric trip to Sweden this year. And I know we always approve the trips and all that, I don't know how much we think in detail about it, but I just wanted to read something that Caleb Whirlin wrote to the parents from the trip that Matthew was on. So, she wrote, "I want to take a moment to let you know how incredibly proud you can all be of your sons and daughters. I'm enjoying every moment with them. They respond with joy and wonder at the new experiences and different environment. In Carl's Corona," which is one of the towns that they went to, "host families and the church staff," and that's where they did a lot of their performances, was at the church, "all took time to let me know what a lovely, kind, humble, and respectful group they are." One host mom told a student that our group totally changed her preconceived notions of American kids." So, I just thought that was a great thing to remind us the impact and power that these trips can have on different cultures when our kids go there and are great representatives. So, anyway, just wanted to share that.
That's awesome. Any other comments? Okay, then I'll move on, business with guests. We do not have any business with guests? Unless you have something to say?
I'm quiet.
There you go. Administrative reports, Dr. Shay.
Sure. A few items. Student handbooks, policy sub tomorrow. We'll begin the sort of committee-level review of the changes to the K-8 and LHS student handbooks. Fairly modest changes, but we expect that those changes will be ready for the full committee in early May. If you have any thoughts, ideas, input, let me know. Friday is an event that I look forward to every year, and I believe Chairman Ray and I will both be attending. This is the District Attorney's Youth Advisory Board meeting. District Attorney Galloony has pulled together a youth advisory board, and it's a collection of students from area high schools up and down Hampton County. And they get together and they talk about issues that are social issues, political issues, economic issues that are important to young people. And then they come up with public service announcements and educational programming for younger students. So, it's a great event, and it's down at the Hall of Fame, I think, on Friday. Chairman Ray is going to talk about our Chapter 70 meeting, so I'll pass on that. A lot of great upcoming events, and to build on what Mr. Shay said, it's sort of that time of year when the arts are in full swing. I'll add to what Kevin said, we have the LHS AP Art Show is Tuesday, May 7th. Long Meadows Got Talent on the 26th of April, and then on the 16th of May is the LHS Spring Concert. So, it's a lot going on in the arts, and obviously, one trip down Bliss Road, you'll see that our athletic teams are in full swing as well. So, spring is in the air. Couple other events. There's a district safety meeting Friday that Mr. Mazza will coordinate, and Thursday, May 9th, is the Excellence in Teaching banquet. That's the event where the Gridspoon Foundation hosts the Winners of the Pioneer Valley Excellence in Teaching Award every year. So, it's a great event, good celebration of teaching and learning, great recognition of some great teachers, including Ms. Kathy Rosato, who is in the audience today. She's one of our winners of the Pioneer Valley Excellence in Teaching Award. So, we're looking forward to that celebration on Thursday, this 9th. So, that's it.
Awesome. Assistant Superintendent reports, Ms. Bertrand.
Okay, so I'll be quick as well, then. We have an elementary team from Woolswans, first and second grade teachers attend what's called PACSCO behavior training. It's a reinforcement model that fits in really well with Castle and the frameworks that we're using at elementary. The team that went loved it, they got a lot of free kind of tricks of the trade to use, and so they're looking forward to using that, and we're hoping to send some more folks to that training as well. If you're free, May 2nd, closed community, our coalition is presenting up a panel on vaping and juuling at the JCC at 6:00, from 6:30 to 8:00. Our W team met. That is, for those of you who maybe don't know that, it's a team of kind of committed folks from the district K through, pre-K through high school, actually, that come together, you know, maybe four times a year, talk about, other than academic indicators of success. So, that's a really good group, they love coming, and we talked about, again, vaping and juuling and some of those kind of destructive decisions that kids are making these days in ways that we can kind of get some prevention information into people's hands. All of our elementary schools are busy meeting on their Castle frameworks. They usually have a monthly meeting, and they're really cute. If anybody ever has time to go to one of those, they usually pick one of the Castle framework indicators and plan a little 20-minute show around that, and kids are the centerpiece for that. I don't know, I've been doing mock interviews for high school students, and I know the students have been down to see you and Marty both. So, some of our kids were looking for summer jobs and after-school jobs, have come down and done some mock interviews with me, and they've been really awesome. I almost hired them. We have some visitors coming from Norwood Public Schools to check out our preschool. We have a great model, and they want to come and see how we do things there. We are having professional development, admin team on our RTI process, not tomorrow, but next Wednesday, someone's coming, Laurel Pelter is her name, from the collaborative in Northampton, to talk about our processes and trying to get those more aligned and more tweaked. Let's see. Marty and I went over to see a NearPod lesson, that's open source software, that's really cool, that teachers are using in a lot of classrooms to enhance the text that we already have, especially in history and social science. It's kind of a boring text that we have, and it really brings a lot of things to life, revolutionary war, we saw, right?
Is there a reason why you were looking at me when you made that comment?
Yes, there is. Yeah, we'll talk about that later. Elementary, if you have kids in elementary, they're starting their life science unit, and so if they come home with a goldfish, not my fault, but we ordered pill bugs, worms, goldfish, butterflies, all kinds of things, and so they've been shipped out to the elementary schools, so your kids should be digging literally into that kind of really cool stuff.
That's guppies, not puppies, right? We're not giving out puppies.
Fifty-fifty. I'm not hearing the guppy-puppy thing. They're guppies. In elementary, teachers have been kind of asking for a grammar resource to enhance our readers and writers workshop. Patterns of Power is something, it's a programmer resource that our lit coaches have been looking at and have loved, they've tried it out on some classrooms, they're going to a PD, so they're hoping to get some of those books, some additional books, they already have some, to start to use some more grammar at the elementary level. And Foundations is our phonics instruction for K, for 1, 2, and 3. And some of our kindergarten folks are thinking that they would like to move it down to kindergarten, it is a kindergarten program as well. Those of you who know, they use lively letters now, there's a big lively letters versus Foundations debate. So, next year, some of our kindergarteners are going to pilot Foundations with some of the students, and so, to see if that might be something they want to adopt going forward. ELA Middle School is reviewing their scope and sequence, they're cleaning out their book closets, throwing old novels, not away, but recycling them, and then we're making lists of new novels for potential reads in the future. And we are getting tons of summer work proposals in, I can talk more in detail about those next time we meet. And tomorrow is Admin Assistant Day, so happy Admin Assistant. I think we're all pretty excited to have our admins. We've had a lot of in and out of the office, and every time someone's out, I screw something up clerical, so thank God they're back and thank you for everything.
Are there any questions for Sue?
I love the mock interviews for high school students. How, is there a process for arranging an interview?
Yeah, well, it's one teacher in particular who has a transition class, so they're working on resume writing and those kinds of skills. And so she sent me some interest areas of some of the students, so I made up some job applications for like camp jobs and things like that. And I just gave them the standard interview questions that we use here when someone applies for a summer camp job.
Okay, so do you have to be a student in that class to be able to do a mock interview?
I would say no, but so far, those are the students that have signed up for that. Yeah, yeah, good question.
And then, the ELA literature, the books that they're not going to be using?
They've turned them into the classroom libraries, so they don't, they don't get rid of them.
I was going to say, have a school that would?
You do. Okay, no, we have a procedure that we go through and we kind of get rid of used things, so.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll definitely keep that in mind, totally.
Perfect, thank you.
Susie.
I had a question about the NearPod lessons. Can you talk a little bit more about that? Because, you know, you mentioned the social studies in particular, you know, and if we're going to a new curriculum with a new curriculum frameworks from the state, like, you know, what will be the process around, like, are we replacing a text? Are we, or maybe not, and going to more of a, you know, online resource?
Probably not a total online resource at this point. NearPod is supplemental piece, it's nothing that you could use, I don't think, you know, soup to nuts for your curriculum. I think that, at this point, we haven't found anything online that would let a teacher come in and, you know, teach first grade social studies, you know, without having to really go from place to place to place to gather stuff. And they're doing that now, kind of, because it's been so long since we've had any updates, and they're really hoping to be able to have a place, you know, for everything. I mean, I think someday, we'll definitely get to open source stuff, for sure, I know some of the colleges are using it.
Right. Just know the new frameworks are relatively skill-based versus, you know, content and theme-based, so how, you know, how will we approach that when the time comes?
So, I think we will use some supplemental things for that, and we have held off on kind of looking at text or even, you know, thinking about text this year because the textbooks, they're not catch, they're not, they say they are, but they're not caught up yet. So, allegedly, they'll have those themes built in, but we'll be looking for that as we like to pilot some things, so.
And the only place where we need the sort of anchor text because of the content-based nature is at the 8th grade for the foreseeable future, so that recommendation will be coming to the committee at some point.
With the state requirements and the resources.
Yeah, but I think that's a question that we ask ourselves all the time, is sort of, when will we hit that tipping point where there'll be enough resources that are available online and that are available online in a coordinated way, you know, and not just a sort of haphazard collection of things that teachers have to, you know, find on their own. And there's so many rich resources out there that can enrich a classroom, and that NearPod experience is a great example. The downside of the open source approach is that you open the door, I think, sometimes to misalignment, you know? Sometimes when you have that anchor textbook, it anchors the curriculum and ensures that there's some consistency from class to class to class. But, you know, it seems that the textbook adoptions that we've made recently have really strong online components, and I think our teachers are accessing those components, and kids are accessing those components to a great degree, but, you know.
Yeah, and I agree with you. Every resource falls short of like, you know, the holy grail.
Of everything.
What are you looking for? And it's just, you know, I keep thinking about the integration of all of the different aspects of social studies in particular, because, and if you look at the new science frameworks, the next-gen science, all of that, it's all very integrated. So, how can we, how do we manage all of that newness of, like, everything's not segmented, but, you know?
How are those overlaid, how do we overlay those skills in the content areas?
Right, yeah.
Because the more it's not about sort of content delivery, the more you can rely on those online resources, yeah.
Right.
And Sue and I have been having a running dialogue about this, so that's why I know she was looking at me when she made that comment. But she's been right on top of it all along, so it's been good.
We need to have research-based, you know, stuff, and a lot of the online stuff is just not there yet. But the online books that come with the books that we purchased, the hardcover books, have been great, especially at high school, and the biology classes and things like that, they've been awesome, so kids aren't toting, you know, 40-count books home every night if they can go home and get online, it's awesome.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I want to underscore the alignment of RTI processes. CES is the Collaborative for Educational Services, it's the collaborative that serves Hampshire County, I guess. And so Sue has identified an individual from CES who's going to come down and sort of really do an audit of our response to intervention practices and make sure that we are in line with best practice, but also in line with each other across the district, you know? Long Meadows made great strides in terms of implementing RTI response intervention practices, but it's been a while since we've kind of held that mirror up to ourselves and said, okay, how are we doing? Where are we falling short? Where could we improve? So, I didn't want that bullet to get lost in the mix there, because it's-
Thanks, I thought it was a race, and I didn't want to lose, though. I was just trying to go through really quickly.
There's a lot of work behind that one.
Yeah.
Behind that one bullet there, so.
No small feat.
No small feat, yeah, right, right.
Any other questions for Sue?
Thank you for doing all that, Sue.
Sue, the only question I had was on the Foundations phonics. So, like, why did we decide to go back to like phonics versus the lively letters, or to try it, I guess?
For one thing, it aligns with what first grade is doing, so it's a pretty smooth transition from K to 1.
Okay.
And I think it's a little more structured, you know, depends on your thoughts about kindergarten and what kindergarten's all about, but I think it's more explicitly taught, a little more structured, and so I think it'll end up being maybe a little bit of Foundations with some lively letter, you know, thrown in, in the mix at the end. It's, well, that's a fun, really fun way for kids to learn the, you know, the sounds and phonics, but it's probably not, doesn't have so much integrity as Foundations, so.
Cool, thank you very much. All right, Tom?
I don't have a formal report. Things happen in my world, are on other areas on the agenda. Marty mentioned the safety committee meeting on Friday, so we're going to continue our work specifically around reunification and building the kits that are needed. And also, the custodians will be receiving some asbestos awareness training next Monday, something that we're required to offer. So, we're scheduling that and get them trained.
Great. Any questions for Tom?
Tom, does that mean there is asbestos in the schools?
There is asbestos in the two middle schools. All of the elementary and the high school, which have been renovated in the last 20 or so years, have had the asbestos removed. But the middle schools, based on their age of when they were constructed, do have asbestos. So, there is a required every three-year inspection to be done, a plan that's kept at each of the buildings, so that it can be come in, and anybody can come in and look at the plan in terms of where it is, employees need to know where it is, and if they're doing any work around those areas, what procedures need to be followed to make sure that they don't disturb it.
Okay. Would I be able to check in with you on that?
Sure.
At some point?
Definitely.
And in early May sometime, a letter will go out to all staff and all parents about our asbestos management practices and how parents can get additional information on it as well. But not unusual to have buildings with asbestos, and as long as it's contained and sealed and not disrupted, it doesn't present a hazard to kids. But the, it's a highly, highly regu, I learned today more, we spent about an hour on this, but it's a highly, highly regulated area, so. And our new facilities director, Nick Dragantis, has really taken it by the horns, he's done a nice job of ensuring that we're compliant with all the piles of regulations on this, so.
We had it at our house, that's why I'm just kind of a little bit like, I'll check in.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, I guess the, one thing I would have is that, yeah, Dr. Shay and I had the pleasure of meeting with Senators Eric Lesser and Jason Lewis today. He's the Senate Chairman of the Joint Committee on Education. Kathy Rosato was with us as well, representing Long Meadow Education Association. And then, all of our counterparts from the area were there, Chicopee, Holy, no, Chicopee, Springfield, Beltratown, Granby, East Long Meadow, Wilbraham, Hamden, Ludlow, a few others. It was great, it was open forum, just discussing the issues that are very pertinent to Western Massachusetts, and looking at the Chapter 70, the Chapter 70 formula, and how they're going to redo it, or they're looking to redo it recently, and give input into that. So, you know, the biggest things that affect Long Meadow, from my perspective, we were just talking about different things, and what we're talking about for the room was, this was a safe space to give feedback without, you know, airing everybody, talking about all, everything with individuals, but from our Long Meadow perspective, you know, the formula affects us basically in two ways, is basically Long Meadow property values haven't risen very much in the last 10 years, and that's part of the formula, the other part of the formula is based upon income tax or wealth from Long Meadow. And that's the area of the formula which actually gave us some more money this time, was the wealth portion was down, our Chapter 70 went up, you'll see 400 grand, Tom, somewhere around there, which gets returned back to the town, and, you know, we gave our concerns about reaching the tax ceiling approaching. So, those are the issues pertinent to Long Meadow. And then, you know, they gave the opportunity to have one-on-one conversations with the senators as well. So, it was a great event. Anything you want to add?
No, every district has its own sort of unique experience with Chapter 70, and, but Arman did a nice job of basically saying, we're all in the same economic boat, you know, and that, as long as property valuations remain stagnant or flat in Western Mass, we're all in a difficult place in terms of Chapter 78 and school funding. So, I think there was more expressions of common experience than there was, you know, this is what we need, this is what we need, this is what we need, but, you know. Good meeting, it was a great opportunity for us to, you know, hear from other communities and talk about the challenges we're facing fiscally, you know?
And I'll be attending the District Attorney's Youth Advisory Board on Friday as well, so if there's anything any of you would like me to bring up or do at that, just let me know. Great. Student representative, Breggie, had a tennis match that rescheduled, so he will not be here tonight, so we don't have a student representative report. Do we have an LPVC report?
There's a meeting tomorrow.
Okay. Do you have a corporation report, or no?
Nope, we haven't met.
Good. Finance sub, is there a report?
Yeah, no report at this time.
You had a meeting tonight.
We had a meeting tonight, we have another meeting scheduled for May 6th at this point, 5:15, but nothing tonight, just following.
Policy sub will be meeting April 25th at 6:00 PM. Evaluation Subcommittee has a meeting scheduled for 5:00 PM on April 25th. Operations Subcommittee, none. Ongoing business, equity and diversity update?
Sure. This is fairly brief. I promised the committee that I would sort of keep you posted on our next steps in terms of ensuring our commitment to cultural competency, ensuring that we are growing and improving as a district in terms of serving the diverse needs of our diverse student body. And you may have seen, I had actually sent an email out to the Long Meadow community earlier today with an invitation to what I've called a community conversation. So, there's two sessions that we're going to hold, May 15th, one at 10:00 AM, another at 7:00. And essentially, the focus is around equity and diversity. And my hope is that we can really ramp up the conversation with parents in this community about, you know, what are the practices and initiatives that are underway that help us serve the diverse needs of all kids? And hopefully get some feedback from parents in terms of how we can improve, how can we better serve the diverse needs of our students? And so, looking forward to those two community conversation events on May 15th. We spent some time as an administrative team talking about sort of the foundation that we can build on in terms of strengthening our commitment to cultural competency. There's a lot of great work underway. I think that the SEL work that we do across the district ensures, or helps kids acquire the skills that they need to be culturally competent. I think Mr. Shay made the point at our last meeting about, you know, this is not just a competency that's important for their careers here in Long Meadow, but it's a competency that they ought to develop to ensure their success in life beyond Long Meadow. And that struck me as being important, and kind of underscored the importance of this work. So, there's also a lot of good data work going on, I would want to assure the committee of that, the community of that, that we are committed to pulling apart the data and looking at the performance of all students, you know, certainly in the aggregate, we have a lot to be proud of, but, you know, when you break apart the scores, are there populations of students that we could better serve? Sue has done a nice job of kind of bringing that increasingly to the attention of our administrative team. We talked a lot about sort of the curriculum commitment that we make, I think there's a, and if you have a different perspective or anything to share, I'd be welcome, but I think in terms of curriculum, I think our teachers are very thoughtful about the literature choices that they put in front of children, the musical selections, the topics that they consider in history classes, that kind of thing. All those things matter in terms of giving kids a sense of comfort in a classroom, feeling that they belong and that they're engaged as learners. And yet, we also talked a lot as an administrative team about sort of where, you know, how can we continue to grow in this area? One of the things I've thought about, and really conceptual at this point, but I think next year, I'm interested in the idea of an Equity and Diversity Steering Committee, you know, bringing together some educators, maybe a school committee member, some administrators, some parents, students, to take a look at these issues and kind of, again, see how we can grow in this area. I think it's, it is that important to the experience of our kids in Long Meadow schools. I think we can do more around data disaggregation, I think we can do more in terms of recruitment of staff to ensure that we are, that we have some diversity in the teaching ranks. That's a challenge that we're interested in exploring further. And then additional staff training, you know, we know that, I think it's important to make sure that teachers have a way to understand how to respond to incidents in their classroom, how to interrupt expressions of discrimination or bias or prejudice, that kind of thing. So, I just want to kind of keep it on our collective radar, on our agenda, let you know that the work is ongoing in this area, and welcome any feedback or questions that you might have. And certainly would welcome your attendance at the community conversation events on May 15th, again, May 15th, 10 o'clock, and again at 7 o'clock in this room. There is a link that I sent out to parents where they can register for that event, we'll limit it to the first 25 or so attendees, just so we can have a sort of a productive conversation. So, those are some of the things underway, and welcome any additional questions or thoughts or feedback you might have, but mostly just an update for you, so.
Any questions, concerns?
I just want to say thank you. This is a really positive step in the right direction, so that all kids feel safe in school, in this, you know, amazing district that we have, and to ensure that, you know, everybody's voice is heard. I think that's, I think, kudos on the May 15th meeting, bringing people together and letting them have a voice in a safe space to talk about what's happening and how we can, because, you know, I think as much as the school has a lot of things in place, you know, we as parents also have to think about what's our role, you know, at home? And how do we send you, you know, children every day who, you know, we've worked with and support- children every day who, you know, we've worked with and supported to have that cultural competence as well? So, you know, I think that's an important aspect of this. It's not just the school's responsibility, it's our community's responsibility.
Totally. Yes, really well said. And I hope that's the way we approach it as a partnership.
Absolutely.
It's not something that, you know, we're not a factory, you know, where you, you know, put a child in at one end, they come out a different way at the other end. It happens as a result of the partnership that we have with parents and the wider community. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thanks for your support. Appreciate, and appreciate the conversation that I've had with individuals on the committee and that we've had here, so.
Great. Moving on to new business. So myself, Bronwyn, Dr. O'Shea, Tom Mazza, we interviewed three law firms, as we were talking about before. They presented, so we'll give our recommendations to the committee. I figured I'd go over our conversation, let everybody ask questions about the interviews or getting information from the four of us. But basically, it's in your packet, we had three law firms that we interviewed. We had Mirac O'Connell, Sharon Siegel, Mark Terry were the lead attorneys. They represent about 15 to 20 school districts. We asked everybody the same question about who do you see yourself as representing? And they made it clear that they represented the school committee, that they also were very, very quick to respond, that they would try to resolve any issues between the school committee, administration, superintendent, very quickly, and they would be a positive member within those interactions. Their integration plan, they were a little not in tune with each other on it. One said that they would want to sit in a room and meet everybody and interview everybody, you know, free of charge. The other one said she would more likely lay back until there was an issue and then meet the people that were involved with the issue. They have a team approach to the district, so the two of them would be, would be working on it. They said various by district, but the primary contact would be the superintendent, although some districts have designated school committee contacts. They have multiple paralegal support, and they aimed, he said, at worst, a 24-hour turnaround time. They were pretty current with the legal issues, they were up to date, giving advice on policy perhaps not being compliant with recent rulings. If a ruling came out, they were saying they were quick to advise their member districts of that. And if there was things that we need questions on, they were more not apt to give a question off, answer off the cuff, they were more apt to research those issues and get back to the district. Any questions about Mirac O'Connell?
So whenever you say that, so Sharon and Mark are the two leads, we just get to, in their scenario, if we were to choose them, we just get...
If one wasn't available, you could call, basically, they also said they have a shared paralegal, so if you called a paralegal, she would get one of them to respond to you.
Armin, oops.
Yeah. Oh.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, John.
So, the whole thing about, I mean, that's a pretty big discrepancy between waiting for something to happen and meeting face to face. Is that, like Jamie said, like, if we call, we're just going to, which one of those processes is going to lead the way for this?
That was the integration plan. That was how they would get to know our district more than handle an issue. So if we had an issue, they would handle it right away. There would be no delay in that. This was, the integration plan was, how do they get introduced to Long Meadow, the school district?
Okay, so there's still a big discrepancy between waiting for something to happen and...
I agree. Yes, yes, yes.
So that wasn't resolved? We don't know what we'd be getting?
No, one of the attorneys said they would wait for an issue until they, to meet people in the district. The other attorney said that they would start by meeting everybody face to face upfront.
Right, so I guess I'm asking which...
The both would happen.
So they're a team?
They're a team.
So we have one team member that we would talk to right away, right? And then the other one would, we'd meet if there was an issue?
Correct. Yeah.
Okay.
It was a little disjointed. I have to, yeah. Yes.
Who are they based on?
Worcester.
So, Armin, can I say like a big picture thing? Like, can you, just for those of us that are new, like, how often do we interact with attorney? Like, is this something that's going to, we're going to talk to these people frequently? Is it unusual? Just an overview of how we interact with them would be great.
So I would say it's, from a school committee perspective, we should not be interacting with the attorneys except in extreme circumstances and/or we are faced with issues that arise to the school committee, and then we should be working with Dr. O'Shea together to contact, our attorney together. Most of the time, it's the chair meeting with Dr. O'Shea, and then I give you guys all the information I have. Like, we're going to go into executive session tonight, I will give you everything that I have from our attorney that I met jointly with Dr. O'Shea. So it should be rare that we, that I should have to talk to an attorney. Now, Dr. O'Shea, in his normal course of business, may have to rely upon the attorney for various things, for employment issues that may arise, for student issues that may arise. This is for our general education matters, so it should be less than, like, our special education matters. And we have an attorney who handles that. They're one of the three here, and that would be far more interfacing with Jean Fontaine and her team in regards to potential, like, 504s, IEPs. But from a general course, if everything is running the way it should be, we shouldn't be involved with the attorney all that much. Tom or Dr. O'Shea?
Yeah, no, I would agree. The exception might be if you're in the middle of negotiations, and if you have your attorney with you at the negotiating table for your bigger units, then in that case, you would, you would have a lot of, the chair or the school committee would have a lot of contact with the attorney. But by and large, you know, and then for us, at the administrative level, it varies. Weeks will go by where we don't need legal consult, and then there might be a week where we're on the phone with an attorney every day, depending on the intensity of an issue. But Armin framed it correctly. It's labor issues, it's personnel issues, student issues, compliance with policy issues, that kind of thing.
Okay, so go to the next one. It was Fletcher Tilton, FletcherTilton.com, also from Worcester. The attorney we met with, the lead attorney, his name was Joseph Bartulis. He's a frequent speaker for MASC, Mass Association of School Committees, and the Massachusetts Association of Business Officers, School Business Officers?
School Business Officials.
Yeah, which Tom is a member of. Tom met, Tom has seen Attorney Bartulis speak on a few occasions. That's how he came to our attention, as well as being, you know, Masbo. He represents less than 20 districts. When we asked him that question, he says he represents the district. He is hired by the school committee but interfaces mainly with the superintendent, and potentially the school committee designee as needed. And that's something we can talk about as well. You know, if we want to designate somebody else besides myself as the representative with the legal counsel, that's up to the will of the board. So, the integration plan, he said he would want to meet the key personnel face to face. He would come here a day, free of charge. Then he said he would also offer a lot of different presentations free to the district, like a presentation on governance for the school committee, presentations on whatever the issues of the jour are for the administration, and we could go from there. But he seemed pretty willing to offer some of these things free of charge. He has a team approach to the district, he has paralegals and support. He was pretty sure of himself on the ability to answer most questions immediately without having to research. But he said if you wanted something in writing and the oral opinion wasn't enough, he would be happy to research them more. But he, you know, he cited, you know, how long he's been doing this, it was a rather long time, and felt pretty confident in his ability to give the most, most current legal opinion. His legal issues, he focused really on labor and employment issues, didn't really get into general education or any of the other education type subjects during the meeting. It was more, he was more focused on labor and employment. Any questions?
Yeah, so if you did have, so say the superintendent did have some questions about a student disciplinary issue, would there be somebody he'd refer in the firm, you know, to versus him if he's mostly focused on labor and employment? That's just been my experience, you know, that there was someone who was designated, like, this is a student discipline issue, I'm going to hand you over to X attorney versus me, I'm the employment attorney.
Yeah, the way he came across to us, this made it seem like he was going to be the person answering all those questions.
Okay.
He, again, he exuded confidence that he'd be able to go outside of them. He seemed, in my opinion, and others can weigh in, he just seemed very more focused in the interview on those labor and employment issues than he was on answering those other questions.
Okay.
To be fair, I don't think we specifically hammered him with any questions specific to general education law, as opposed to letting him speak about what he can do.
Got it.
Okay.
And they're based on Worcester?
They're Worcester as well. Okay. And the last firm that we interviewed was Murphy Hess, Tumi, and Lahane. The lead attorney is, it says Regina Tate, or she goes by Jenny. She also brought with her Michael Macaro and Sarah Spatafori. They were her co-lead attorneys, so the three of them came. They've been the current legal representation for Long Meadow Special Education since 2006. Their firm has over 160 districts represented. That includes some districts that they use for special education alone, and there's some districts that they use for general education alone, and then there's some that have a combination of both. But in total, they have 160 individual districts represented in some way, shape, or form. She was, Jenny was very clear to say that she represents the district and what the best interests of the district are. And she would interface with the superintendent and the admin team, although she does recognize that they would be hired by the school committee. Their philosophy was that they're here to keep the district protected and safe. Her integration plan was, or their integration plan was to meet the key personnel face to face. She knows most of the administrators in town already. Jean Fontaine is very well acquainted with Jenny. And they offer a lot of different presentations free to the districts, including, again, governance and other issues that might come up. They have a team approach to the district, so they have paralegals and support. I think the most poignant thing I heard that day was, they may not offer what we want to hear, but it will be the legal opinion under the law. So it was...
That's what you're asking for.
It was pretty, and the thing that struck me about this, and I had, we had this conversation during it, was I remember at work, when I was really young in my career, I had an attorney for our company tell us once, he's like, I don't represent you, I represent the company. And I, you know, so, and it kind of just struck you, you know, she was just being way upfront with, you know, this is what's going to happen. I'm going to protect this district based upon the law. Legal issues, they were very current. They spoke about and brought up all the issues that they think are current, relevant, affecting everybody, including ADA, 504s. They went into labor, and they went into other issues as well. So, so those were the three presentations that we have. Any questions about, oh, Murphy Hess, they have locations all over the state, including Springfield. But Jenny herself and the other two attorneys are located, the two attorneys are central Mass, she's more of Eastern Mass. Any questions there?
Actually, oh, I'm sorry.
God, you go first.
Again, that side of the room. You're first.
You go first.
It's a comment, not a question, so you want to go first?
Come on, Hench.
Yeah, my question is this. What are the, without going in and going on dinner online, what are the size of these firms? So I'm assuming the last one is the biggest firm. Just from a continuity plan, it sounds like, I'm not going to sit here just because I don't want to know how long each of these folks have been practicing, but give you an idea of whether we're going to have a continuity issue of who our lead's going to be. I don't want to bounce it around. People bouncing around, it's not going to be good. So how big, I'm assuming the first two are small?
They're not small. I mean, they were all mid-sized firms. I mean, I'm not saying they're like national presence, they're all like massive, like New England-based firms. The, specifically, we had reached out to Murphy Hess, Tumi, Lahane ahead of time, asking that question, you know, how long they're going to, you know, about continuity. We were assured that Jenny would be the lead attorney for at least two years, is that what it was?
Yep.
And then she would have the other two attorneys, Michael and Sarah, who would be there as a continuity plan long-term. Attorney Bartulis, he was kind of, he has other attorneys at the firm, again, but he was more that it was him you were going to be dealing with. We didn't get into continuity on that. And on Siegel and Terry, again, it was them that we were dealing with. They had a slew of other attorneys who also handled education and labor. I think they said there was a team five to seven, I believe it was off the top of my head, but it would be them that we were really dealing with.
Okay. And just as a follow-up to that, so obviously, the last one here, we have our own Jean, obviously can give her opinion on how you work with them, because they've been representing us. Did we call any of these other districts for the other two attorneys?
No, we...
Did we get references?
We didn't ask for...
We didn't do that?
We were doing the interviews upfront. It's not a, this is not a, what do you call it? We don't have to go through the contract process like we would with other things for this type of vendor.
You don't have to?
No.
Will we recommend it? We will though, or not? No?
We interview, and if we wish, we can vote on it. Same process we did when we brought on Jenny, brought on the last one.
Okay.
Ryan?
Yeah, she gave a presentation that I attended when the discipline laws changed a few years ago. I was working in a different district at the time, and I thought it was incredibly informative and just, the details were fantastic, and it allowed me and the assistant principal I was working with to make sure that we were following the law exactly. So I found her to be very competent.
And has Jean weighed in on her side of it? Have you already interacted with her? Yeah, so since Sue was formerly in People Services and has worked with Jenny in many different occasions, and I think one of the, one of the things that is sometimes difficult is when you have, although it's not unusual, to have a counsel who represents you in special education and then another who represents you in general education. The difficulty is that very often, one, those areas bleed into each other. And so there's not really a fine demarcation between those two areas. And so having a single counsel representing you on both sides of those issues would be very helpful. But Sue has worked with Jenny for many years.
Yeah, to follow up, I found in the past, it almost fractures, like, it almost encourages that divide between regular and special when you have two attorneys, because you'll often have the same, you know, issues. I worked with Jenny for years, so I don't know, it's a long time more than I want to say, probably. If you call her, you get an answer to your question immediately. She can be driving in the car, she picks up the phone, she can be in the middle of a hearing, she'll call you at her break. We worked with several of the other attorneys in the firm as well. They're all exceptional. So I don't know the other two, not to discredit the other two firms, but had nothing but excellent guidance from Attorney Tate. And sometimes we don't like it, but she will definitely let you know how it is, you know, if you made a mistake. She'll say, what were you thinking, you know? But I think she's pretty fond of this district, and I can't recommend her enough, really.
So my one last question, I promise it'll be my last. So why, I like knowing the history before we make decisions. So why was this divided before? Does anybody know?
So I...
Why do we separate all these attorneys this much?
I just got, so we had, I know, I know, right? Dr. Cofone was the PS director who came in prior to me, who kind of made that a criteria of her coming, that she came with a special attorney before we had kind of an attorney that was doing both sides? Maybe not.
No.
She wasn't. But that attorney also was leaving her firm to go back into public education. So it was a good breaking point. So that's why.
Okay. But in your opinion, it makes sense to have it all...
But in your opinion, it makes sense to have it all kind of grouped together as well, just for continuity, it sounds like?
Yeah, but which one do you call, right? Is this issue or that? Which attorney do you call would be easier?
Right, and, and you have, having it under one roof, it encourages you to look at issues broadly instead of narrowly as a general education matter or a special education matter. So that's always helpful. I, I previously had worked with a different lead attorney from Murphy Hess. Their firm, Murphy Hess may be comparable in size or may not be, I don't know, to be honest with you, compared to Merrick O'Connell and Fletcher Tilton, but I think the reason that they represent 160 school districts is because they, they tend to focus on the municipal side of law and education side of law. Fletcher Tilton, I think they practice in all areas, if I remember correctly, and Merrick O'Connell was the same. So I think that Murphy Hess is, is more specialized in, in municipal law and education law.
Okay, got it.
Yeah, and, you know, just in, in going through the interviews, the 160 versus the 15 to 20, and the 20 stuck out, you know, pretty big as a, you know, from, you know, from an endorsement of, of the firm. I would like to state that I appreciated the, both Fletcher Tilton and Merrick O'Connell coming. I don't think we would be, you know, in error if, if we were to go with any of the law firms that we interviewed, I think they were all very capable and competent. You know, my opinion is that I think Murphy Hess, Tumi, and Lehane makes very good sense for, for the district. We've got, we've got the relationship, they know Long Meadow as a district, the integration should be fairly seamless, there's no appreciative difference in, in the pricing between them all, and based upon all of those, I, for one, who was part of the, that committee interviewing, would, would recommend that we go with MHDL. But, Bronwyn?
I would agree with that. I did find all of the attorneys we spoke with very knowledgeable from all three firms, but I was particularly impressed with Murphy, Hess, Tumi, and Lehane. And just, I think that it makes a lot of sense having them already represent our special ed side and having done so for such a long time. And like you said, Armin, they know Long Meadow really well, and they were very, very knowledgeable and just have a lot of experience, and there was definitely a level of comfort there, so I would endorse them as well.
This-
So I, I think that makes good sense, it seems like a great idea. Can you, I mean, you said it very briefly, the, the budget implications, like, can you just talk a little bit more about that?
Yeah, I think all three were 225 to 240 an hour, somewhere in that ballpark. So, I mean, again, I think our line item for non-special ed legal is much less than what we maybe tend to spend on specialized, so I don't wanna switch, and I don't, I think our current rate is 225 with our current counsel.
So it wouldn't be an issue as far as you're concerned?
I don't expect it to be, no.
Okay.
I think a bigger issue would be an issue that takes a lot of hours, not necessarily the increase in the rate that we make experience.
Okay. And I think it's, I think it's really good for the, to point out to the public that all of these firms, when they're not dealing with school district, charge a lot more than the rate that they give to the school district. So that 225 to 240 an hour, they all came in and said it's really over $300 to $400 an hour if we were to be billed their normal time they do it to school districts as, as a public service. Anybody else?
I'll just add my endorsement, it makes sense to have the same, the same firm, because just like, you know, Marty said, they're under the same roof, issues can become highly complex. You know, you could have a personnel issue coupled with a student issue, and if you have those labor attorneys talking with the, the person who's focused on the student discipline issue, you've got that much more of a, a support. And I've been there, so I understand completely how that can intersect, and I think it just makes sense. Yeah, absolutely.
Awesome.
So yeah, moved by the number of districts they represent over the other ones, I think that's a valuable piece of information.
I did have one question, do, do the attorneys, and again, this is something that was provided by the attorney that I was lucky to have for my 17 years there, we had the same attorney, it was amazing. But as far as negotiations, are they, do they prepare, like, you know, the comparisons for you, all of the settlements going on across the state, and things like that for, like, labor negotiations?
They would, Murphy Hess has done that.
Okay.
Yeah, I think, and having that, the breadth of clients that they have, I think that would help with negotiate, that's a really good point.
Definitely, that's, that's a really key value.
Yeah.
Great. All right. Any further discussion? Is there a motion?
I move that the school department transition the provision of legal services for labor relations and general education matters from Valerio, Domenello, and Hillman LLC to Murphy, Hess, Tumi, and Lehane, acted immediately.
Motion is your second?
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? See, none, call for a vote, all in favor? Any animus? I'd just like to go on record thanking Ms. Elizabeth Valerio for, for her service to the, the district, and wish them well in their future endeavors. The calendar committee, a joint committee of up to nine teachers, representative of each school appointed by the LDA, and up to nine administrators appointed by the superintendent, developed and are recommending the 2020, 2021 school calendar. The makeup of the calendar committee is defined in the Unit A contract. We have it before us. Dr. O'Shea, any discussion?
I'm open to questions, it, it, sometimes you have years where the calendar decisions are difficult because of the way the holidays break. I think we found that we arrived at this particular recommendation fairly quickly, so we're, we're well ahead of schedule in terms of having a potentially approved calendar, this is the 2021 school year. It would have the first day of school on Monday, August 31st, and the last day of school with no snow days on June 16th. I think what's a little bit different about this calendar would be that the first week of school would be a full week of school. Typically, we, we start with two or three or four-day weeks, this would be a full week, so we would be able to quickly get some educational continuity in place in, in September. There wouldn't be many interruptions. The feedback that we've gotten from the community is to try to limit the number of weeks that are disrupted, and so this hopefully reflects that as, as much as possible. So it has our five professional development days, it has the religious observance holidays built in, and it is for your consideration. And it certainly doesn't need immediate action, if you need some time with it, if you'd like to talk to any of us individually about it, we're happy to. So if you want to vote on it tonight, you could, or if you wanted some additional time, that's fine too, we have plenty of time before the 2021 school year. Although, parents, I'm learning that families plan their vacations far in advance.
I don't know what families' dos are. Far better ones than that. Yes, Kevin?
I mean, it, it looks, looks pretty standard to me, I didn't see anything that surprised me. Just one thing that I'm just curious about, if we ended up ever having more than five snow days, what happens?
You, you have to go 180 days.
Oh, Brian.
Yeah, 180, what's that?
So like, those yellow days just keep moving out?
Yeah, I, I would say, I've always been interested in, in the five-snow-day thing, because it leads people to believe that there's five freebies, but there's not. You're going 180 days no matter what. I, I think if you go after July 1, I think there's some provisions where you can appeal to the state.
It's in the contract, yeah.
As well, thank you.
We faced this, what was it, back in 2010 or 2011? And we were going up, and we had to make up one day, I remember working with Jan on this, and we had to make up one day, like, out of the, like, in April or something, we made it.
Vacation or something?
Yeah, vacation, yeah.
Oh, I have no idea, you're that much of a desk.
That wasn't fun.
We're always in April. We did that.
Yeah, because you can't go past June 30th, that's contract.
That's typical of everybody.
Yeah.
That's not just Long Meadow.
No.
Nobody goes past June 30th.
Mark, the only thing I would ask you, and I'm not suggesting this by any stretch of imagination, so Wilberham experimented this year with, with only one week of vacation?
I, I-
Did that come up in the calendar committee?
It did, yeah, it, I think that there was a large consensus that we benefit from having the two vacations, the February-
Well, I agree.
And the April vacation. There, there didn't seem to be much momentum around going to one vacation.
Okay. Further discussion, or does anybody want to make a motion, or do we want a table to the future? Yes?
You had your expression. Trying to smile.
Motion?
I move on the recommendation of the superintendent and the calendar committee, that the school committee approve the 2020, 2021 school calendar as presented.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second, and any discussion? See, none, call for a vote, all in favor? There is an executive session planned for this evening, do I have a motion?
I move that the school committee meet in executive session pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A. Purpose, one, to address a written complaint against an employee of the school district. Purpose, two, to conduct a strategy session in preparation with collective bargaining with units B, C, D, F, and H. And purpose, seven, consideration of release of executive session minutes from previous meetings, to reconvene into open session. This motion requires a roll call.
Motion is your second?
Second.
Motion is second, call for a vote, oh, discussion? Call for a vote, Jamie?
Aye.
Jan?
Aye.
Bronwyn?
Aye.
Armin, aye. Ryan?
Aye.
Suzie?
Aye.
Kevin?
Aye.
We are now in executive session, we will reconvene into open session, that portion will not be recorded.[1788.83]